Good afternoon from me and good evening everyone else. Welcome to Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District 13. School Board Meeting for Tuesday, March 21st, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask everyone if they would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Natty, if you would call the roll, please.
Palmer?
Here.
Mueller?
Here.
Asamurai?
Here.
Severson?
Here.
Lewis?
Here.
Larkin?
Here.
Superintendent Kelly?
Here.
Okay, thank you. Our mission statement. Columbia Heights Public Schools create worlds of opportunity for every learner in partnership with supportive small-town communities by challenging all to discover their talents, unleash their potential, and develop tools for lifelong success. Our core values are community, excellence, collaboration, integrity, respect, courage, and innovation. Next up would be the approval of the agenda, adjustments, announcements, and correspondence, starting with the approval of the agenda. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved. Second.
Natty? Natty, who was the second, please?
Laura.
Laura, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Our announcements. April 7th, Friday, there will be no school. It's a grading day. April 11th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. April 14th, Friday, no school. The district office will be closed. April 18th at 5:00 PM, there will be a school board listening session. Also, April 8th, 5:30, there will be a school board work session. And April 25th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, regular school board meeting. Next up is correspondent Superintendent Kelly. Is there any correspondence tonight?
Mr. Chair and members, there's no correspondence at this time.
Okay, thank you. Next is communication to the board. Citizen and employee representatives, at this time, any citizen or employee may briefly address the school board. The board will listen to brief remarks, ask clarifying questions, and if desired, request that the administration follow up. The board will not take action at this meeting on requests presented at this time. Is there anyone to speak tonight?
No.
No? Okay, very good. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes the personnel report, the treasures report for December 2016 and January 2017, minutes of the February 14th and 28th school board meetings, the February 21st work session, and the February 21st special call meeting. If I could get a motion to move that forward, please.
So moved.
Is that Holla?
Yep.
Second?
Second.
Lauren, thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none, all of us in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Abstain? Motion carries. Next up is the acknowledgement of contributions, and I'll start with a motion in a second to move that forward, then I'll read it. Looking for a motion?
So moved. Molly?
That was?
Molly.
Molly, thank you.
Second.
Thanks.
Second, Natty.
Second, Natty, thank you. The resolution reads as, whereas Minnesota Statute 123B.02 permits school boards to receive for the benefit of the district bequests, donations, or gifts for any proper purpose and apply the same to the purpose designated. In that behalf, the board may act as trustee of any trust created for the benefit of the district and for the benefit of the pupils thereof. Therefore, be it resolved by the school board of Columbia Heights Public Schools Independent School District Number 13 that the school board accepts with appreciation the contributions detailed in the background in the amount of $4,525. The detailed background, a donation of $20 was made to Valley View Elementary by Tom Wojcik for student needs. A donation of $200 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Financial One for the high school study seminar. A donation of $200 was made to Columbia Heights Public Schools by Bromley Printing for high school stu- study seminar. A donation of $500 was made to Columbia Academy by Betty Tissell for Concordia Language Field Trip. The following donations were made to Columbia Heights Baseball Fellowship Program. Kiwanis Key Club, $2,000. Northeast State Bank, $500. Robert Nygaard, $20. Jack and Dee Gauz, $25. And Karen and Steve Ogumot, $1,000. Donations in kind or value in kind. Donations of hats and gloves to Valley View Elementary by Honeywell E. and ES Sales for winter basic needs, estimated value $17. Donation of winter coats to Valley View Elementary by Apone Chevez for student needs, estimated value of $18. And donations of used books to North Park Elementary by Bobby Graffpritz for student needs, estimated value of $25. Total fiscal year 2016-2017 monetary contributions to date, $60,667.54. And with that on the table, is there any discussion? And if we're hearing none, Natty, this would be a roll call.
Yep. Palmer?
Aye.
Mueller?
Aye.
Asamurai?
Aye.
Severson?
Aye.
Lewis?
Aye.
Larkin?
Aye. Motion carries. Next up would be, the resolution carries, sorry. Next up would be discussion reports and information items. Board members will report on board activities since the last regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education. And Lauren, we'll start with you, if you won't mind.
Sure, absolutely, thank you. I actually was very sick since our last meeting, but I had had several conversations with community members and several emails with community members as well.
Okay, thank you. Laura?
Well, I attended the choir concert over at the high school. Very, it was a very good program. It's, I really enjoy going out there and hearing the kids. They develop so quickly, you know, just from the last concert to this one, and the one at the end of the year is usually quite amazing, and I highly recommend everybody attend it. I also attended the 916 monthly board meeting. They had two presentations that were of interest. One was a University of Minnesota Research Project, which is, it is sort of like a tele- tele, I guess the best way to explain it is, sometimes with children that are having some sort of behavioral issues, that it helps to have a team come in and do a consult. And they, the, the triggers and things aren't always apparent when the team arrives there. So what they are trying to do is they're trying to make it a little bit more available for people from, in another area to be able to consult at that time by observing behavior, and as well as being able to do coaching with, with the teacher while they're actually responding, so it would be in real-time action. So I thought that was very interesting. It's going to be a couple-of-year project, and I look forward to seeing the results of that. I also attended the AMSD meeting as well, and they went over quite a bit of the legislation and proposed bills. And if anybody wants to see the AMSD position or various House and Senate bills, you can go to the AMSD website, and it has kind of a breakdown of the language. It's, it's pretty extensive, so anybody who's interested in getting into the weeds on that, that's something to do. Oh, the other thing at the 916 meeting was we also had a presentation on some recruitment, which I, I hope to have a meeting with our superintendent and various people here at the district who, with some interesting recruitment ideas. And that's pretty, oh, and I attended the chair meeting just prior to this. I tried to rattle it off as quickly as possible. So, okay, I'm done.
Thank you, Laura. Molly?
Yep, I had lots of conversations with community members and parents, as well as many staff in the district. I also attended the girls' section basketball games, and also several of the boys varsity basketball games. And I think I'm going to speak for everyone when we wish them well and good luck tomorrow at Williams Arena at noon. So that's it for me.
It's been a while. Sorry I missed the last meeting. I was also ill. So I'm having a hard time remembering what I've done since my last meeting or since ours. So I think we had the Columbia Academy conferences, I'm not sure when that fell, was down there for that, and the various sporting events, you know, most notably the boys' section game last week, which was a blast. Superintendent Kelly, thanks for sitting next to me and letting me talk basketball to you. Also had a more formal meeting with Superintendent Kelly. Member Palmer and I got to grab breakfast, and I've talked with various members of the community, been out and about a lot, so bumped into a lot of people.
Thank you. Holla?
So, since the last school board meeting, I've read to students at North Park, which was a lot of fun, and I know the two of you had done that, too. It was so nice to be around the little ones. And then attended conferences at the high school. And then I was fortunate enough to attend Reimagine Minnesota, and that was amazing. I hope the other groups also had good experiences like that. And then today's listening session.
Okay, thank you. I was at the, attended the choir concert as well as Member Palmer, and the kids keep just doing amazing things, so if you have an opportunity, I would encourage you to go and listen to them. I was at one of the basketball games, it would have been the semifinals, I think, for the boys, and that was a fun game to watch as well. And I concur with Member Lewis, really excited about tomorrow. And my understanding is that, is it a live stream somewhere? Is that correct?
Yes.
And did you post it somewhere?
Yeah, I, I'll-
Is that, is that in the workplace?
It'll be, it'll be livestreamed, and it'll be coming out of, Casey, I think it's, go to the district homepages or the high school homepages?
Links are-
The links are there. Okay, great.
Perfect. Okay. Okay, and that's all I have to report. Next up is the superintendent's report. Superintendent Kelly, do you have a report this evening?
Chair Larkin, yes, and point of fact, I do. So thank you. I attended the City of Columbia Heights Roundtable Discussion on Circle Terrace, the Circle Terrace Project. That's a fascinating project and what they're going to want to do with that building. It was great to be in a room with about 20 other people, all of them collaborative partners around the table, talking about in the best interests of kids in our community and the adults as well. The focus of the meeting, although it was led by the police department, was for programming that would be in the building, starting in the fall of 2017. They're not quite sure when it's going to open, but they wanted to see who might want to do some programming. We had a list as long as your arm for people that really wanted to do things. And so, as a district, we brainstormed some things, but community education will probably be our first partners at the table because we like to do some parenting classes there, some early learning classes. And so, we're going to start with community education, but we'd like to branch out. But one of the things that everyone decided in the room is we should ask the people that live right around there what they would like, rather than programming for them, what, what would they like? And so, there's going to be a survey, it's my understanding, put out by the police department, and then that will be shared with us, and from there, we can formulate other plans. So that was off to a great start, and I look forward to that. I want to say thank you to the 20 students, staff, community members, and particularly Director Asamurai, who spent the evening with Reimagine Minnesota and, and, in our community cafe. Director Laura McLune and I took the bus up with the kids, and everybody else got there on their own. And there was about, I think, 250 to 300 people in the room from four school districts, Anoka, and it was Fridley, Spring Lake Park, and Columbia Heights. And we spent two and a half hours really in focus groups, giving feedback to 40 superintendents in the metropolitan area on what, what a reimagined educational system could look like, a school system in Minnesota. And along the way, they had a resident artist that was sketching our work. They did that at every, at every session, and then we all created things at the table to be harvested, as it said, to be passed along. And it was really something to be, it was exciting. I want to add that we had our first meeting since then with a smaller group over at Ties on Monday, where we got to see what, on all the, all the walls at Ties, they had all of the pictures of what was drawn and what the students had done when they had their student group meetings. And then we, our job that day was to take it and look for differences and similarities and to really see where the common ground was. And so, we spent about two and a half hours doing that. That will be reframed, and then we'll meet again. And I just think we're off to a really excellent start. The, the bottom line of that will be those recommendations will be written up and shared with school board members, the legislature, on what are some of the things that people really want out of education. And I think for me, although it was great to see that many adults in the room, it was really powerful to hear the student voices. And when you looked at the feedback from the students on Monday, I'm, I'm nodding this way because I had a few people down there, and I'm going to thank them in a minute, the student voices were the most, that resonated with me, and what they really want. And so, you'll be seeing that, and I'll be happy to share later some of the individual harvests that they had, too. I'll put it in the update. It was a great experience. I want to thank Director Stenvik and Stunkel and McLune and Coordinator Jen Babish for attending that meeting with me. It was really another high point of harvesting in, for the district. We had, in this very room, a few weeks ago, we were creating greater opportunities for students, parents, and teachers to provide access to college opportunities through hosting the National College Board to come out. It was very exciting. We had information sessions, and that was on March 7th. We had more than 50 people from across the metro area that heard firsthand what's going on, that's new and updated around the SAT tests and the advanced placement services provided to the state and that the College Board offers. And since nobody else is really forecasting this information, we received some information that won't even be announced until July at the national conference. So that was exciting. I want to thank Don Hoyam and Director Stenvik for really hanging in there with me on, on planning that College Board meeting. The pre-K admin team continues to read about coherence and, and trying to match that to where we want to shift our resources and priorities. That's, and so, that was, this morning, actually, we met again. And in addition to that, we have an administrative PLC that looks at the, where we're going with the data district-wide and by specific buildings, so we hold ourselves accountable as an admin team as well, to see where we're going. And so, that occurred today, and it will occur again in May. It's, it's, it's part of our, our learning, and then in June, we're going to wed the coherence book with building better budgets, so that we have, we've, we'll round out the year with our priorities that way. I want to say, and Director Stenvik led us this morning, so thank you for that. It's been a busy week. I do have an announcement about the boys' basketball team. I can't say enough about it. It's nice to be going to state. I want to, I really want to thank Director Severson for giving me basketball tips throughout the basketball games and for, that's also Member Lewis, who at the last one, was giving me a few tips, too, on basketball. I'm learning a lot. And I thought I knew stuff, but boy, when you're sitting next to coaches, you learn a lot more, particularly about the refing.
They were wonderful.
They were wonderful refs.
High School League refs are wonderful.
They were great, and I was learning the secret hand signals, about how this all works. But we are excited. The high school is doing a wonderful job of trying to get everybody down, all the students that want to go tomorrow. I, I'm not sure, but we may have up to 600 kids that will be traveling down-
Wow.
-to the, to the game on buses, and, and, and we have team shirts, game shirts, and those, I think, are still available to purchase, although there's a limited supply because I imagine that we've gone through quite a few shirts today, but you could contact the activities office for that. And I'm just going to say that your number is 763-528-4511, in case people want to inquire about those shirts. We, as was stated before, it will be livestreamed, and I said it was going to be on the district and the homes, and the high school homepages, but I think I also heard Director Mayan say it was also going to be on Facebook?
I think so, all three.
The link's on all three. So that's our way to access, access that. It is for the, it is an excused absence for any student going to the game with parent permission. And so, we do have other staff and students and parents that will be down there. So, an exciting, exciting time. Good luck to all. I also wanted to update that we're beginning the Valley View Principal Search. It is already posted. Today, Director Bennett and I met with the Valley View Building Leadership Team, which is always kind of the how-we-do-it's around here, as far as what they, since they're on the ground, are looking for in the next leader at Valley View. There's also a monkey survey that has gone out to parents and staff. If I missed anybody, parents, staff, and school board. How could I miss you guys? On what you want, want to see in the next leader. What we do is we take a composite of all of those things, put it together, and that becomes the guiding document, one where in the interview process, on what people feel that they really need. Out of that search, we hope to have a recommendation to the board, or at least be doing final interviews and things by the end of April. But you never know how that's going to go, but we're ballparking that for right now. And then, if things weren't exciting enough, we have, the New York City Study Seminar is leaving on Saturday, and we will be gone from March 25th through April 1st. This will be the Advanced Art Folks and the Choir. And we will be doing some things on Instagram, so you can follow us on Superintendent's Instagram, and I'm sure the kids will have lots of things coming back into the district, and I'm sure Director Mayan will keep you posted on all those events. And so, everybody's, they're going to do classes after school to just get ready for the trip one more time, and then, it's hard to believe, but we're on the bus on Saturday morning. So that's happening. I want to thank Chair Larkin for calling in from where he was to talk to me on a few issues, and I did have multiple meetings with some of you, and it was really good to have those conversations, and then did text and have messages from you. So I want to thank each and every one of you for your time. And that concludes my report. I'm done, John.
Thank you. Next, next up is the Highland Elementary video. I guess some Casey's come to the-
Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly, good evening. The preceding three school board business meetings, we have introduced three of our six new informational videos. Tonight, Highland Elementary School Principal Michelle DeWitt is here to talk about and show her school's new video. As with all of our videos, the stories they tell are aligned to our district mission, core values, strategic roadmap, and comprehensive communications plan. Tonight, and all of our videos, are strategies that help us achieve strategic direction, e, tell our story. And with that, to tell the Highland story, Principal DeWitt.
Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the school board, Superintendent Kelly. It's my pleasure to be here tonight. As with the other schools, it was quite an event, doing a day's worth of videotaping. We had the pleasure of scheduling our video on the day that the first graders went over to Crestview Nursing Home to do our holiday concert. So that was why we picked a certain date, so that was one of our signature pieces, is how Highland really branches out into the community and our community involvement. Some of our other focuses were on Spanish in the primary, as well as our Excel cluster classroom, and then just overall, some of the, the things that were focused also at Valley View with their Spanish, or with our science lab, and had, we had parents come in that did a few parent presentations. So I know you'll see one of the parents, and then you'll hear another parent in the video. So I'll turn it over to Casey to start the video.
We just have a very warm and welcoming community here.
We do kind of have that very small-town feel, where everybody knows each other.
Nice job.
The teachers, they're like family members for their kids.
Which one had the most evaporation?
Our students feel engaged and welcome.
The teachers build a relationship with the kids.
I love Highland because it celebrates diversity.
We have a great diverse group of kids that really want to learn and really love being here at school.
Three divided by nine.
Technology is constantly growing and changing.
They're able to enhance their instruction.
It really opens up a lot of doors for our students.
Students go to specialist classes on a daily basis. Art and music and band are important for our students to show their strengths through the arts.
Music and arts in general are exceptionally important for our students, to grow them as whole people.
Kids can really express themselves in ways that they might not be able to express themselves in other places.
It grows their minds. They can increase their math and reading scores.
We have our heads in the academics and our hearts in the arts. We develop the whole child through a variety of activities that make students well-rounded people.
One thing will be tested.
Science at Highland is a lab class, taught to all third, fourth, and fifth grade students, and it gives the students the opportunity for hands-on projects that they're not able to do in their classrooms.
Quince, ¿está bien?
Our Spanish program gives students the opportunity to learn Spanish when it's most easy to learn.
We do a lot of games, we sing, we read books, and kids pick it up like that.
Do we have a remainder?
The LEAP program at Highland is a multi-aged, gifted, and talented cluster classroom.
They're provided a rigorous curriculum that is challenging and moving them forward and progressing them at a faster pace.
It also gives students the opportunity to learn as a community with students who are very similar academic learners.
Uno.
I would definitely recommend Highland. I love the staff here.
Muy bien.
They're awesome.
My kids love coming to school here.
He's fun, where he sits.
Questions or comments?
Any questions?
Very nice.
That's great.
Very nice.
Yeah.
It's nice.
Well done.
With these videos, just when I think it can't get any better, it does. And I know how hard it is to be on camera all day and to try to pull it off and condense it down, so congratulations to both of you, because it's really a job well done. Casey, where are we going to find this, so if other people want to see it again?
Excuse me. It is on the school's homepage. It's on Facebook. Sorry. And we also have it on the district website. Did I say Facebook?
Yeah.
And we haven't had it on Superintendent's Instagram yet, little long.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
All right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up would be K-12 Activities Update.
Good evening, members of the board. Chair Larkin, Superintendent Kelly. Here tonight to give you an update or conclusion to most of our winter athletics. Fortunately, our boys' basketball team isn't letting us wrap them all up yet, so they want to continue into the spring, and I think all of us are okay with that. I'll start out with our winter registration numbers for basically most of our sports here. Our basketball teams ran at about 60 participants as registration area, both girls and boys. The swim team, about 30 participants. Wrestling was about 25. Dance team, 24. Gymnastics, about 25. We had one through our co-op with hockey. Knowledgeable, about 22. Math team was down this year with eight. Speech, we had two registered, and then CA Robotics was still, they do a nice job down there with keeping their students there at 28, and then high school team is at six. So this is kind of very similar to what you saw last year with the winter numbers. Going into our season with our sports teams, gymnastics was really on a rebuilding year. We had some seniors that left the team last year. This year, we didn't have any senior leadership, and about half our team was from the middle school. So we're basically on a reset year with our gymnastics program. a reset year with our gymnastics program, and they're learning the skills. And I can say, I've seen the little, the young ones there. We have a lot of youngsters interested in gymnastics, and that area is used quite extensively. So, that's good to see. The dance team, wow, they did such a nice job this year of making a step forward. They had been basically using the jazz area only, and this year, we kind of pushed the team to go with high kick, which is really, really, we need to do that because they get judged in both areas when they do competition. So, I know the coach was a little apprehensive at the start of the year, kind of pushed her to it. And I, we had a debrief at the end of the season, and she's so glad that we did move that direction. So, we had some of the highest marks that they've had. Next year, we have a young team, so next year, the coach is really, you know, excited that we can hopefully make some strides in overtaking some of the teams. So, for all conference, Estrella Ortiz made it for the dance team, and we also had a couple of young ladies in the honorable mention area, Marin and Helen Desta. Boys swim and dive, again, I was very happy with this. We had really strong numbers this year in the boys' swim area. Again, the meets, they were very, very well attended. We had some, a lot of, a lot of people coming to those events. Ben Bardell, he went to state last year in dive, and once again, this year, he represented Columbia Heights. We have a lot of state representation this year from Columbia Heights, so it's very fun to see that in our sports programs. So, Ben, he did extremely well. He, he did a great job at state. He made the first cut. They went through, he didn't make it through the second cup, but he did such a nice job through it that it was, it was great to see him do that. Girls' basketball, they finished the season with a 12-win and 13-loss record. Highlights from the season, we did have two young ladies that were seniors and did a tremendous job since they've been here at Columbia Heights, very strong when it comes to putting up some stats for us. Pasha Scott, she just missed the 1,000 mark. She worked hard. She had 982. Also, Emily Sheets was up there as well with 874. So, they worked really hard this year. Obviously, those were the two selections for all conference for our team. And then, honorable mention, some girls that are coming up for us, Vaughn and Greenfield. Boys' basketball, again, I put this together last week, so it isn't quite as reflective as where we are today. But, they did, they did beat Monomidi in that great game. Just talking to the coach and how the boys have been progressing and playing, you know, as a team together here, I think we're really excited for what's ahead of us coming up to the state game tomorrow. So, we had three players this year hit 500 points as their threshold, and it's kind of an area you'd like to see. They are also the three all-conference with Wendell, Deandre, and Quentin. And we had two boys make the honorable mention list of Kadeen Thomas and Christian Kelly. And just to kind of emphasize Superintendent Kelly's points earlier, we, the registration for students heading to the state game has just been amazing. We spent the day, pretty much the day registering and getting everybody ready to go for this. We have eight bus, buses just for students to attend this, and we have two for our pep band. We have one for the community. So, Columbia Heights is going to be well-represented at Williams Arena tomorrow. And we still had people coming in tonight for tickets. And it's just, it's been tremendous, and everybody's so excited as they come in, wondering where the, the T-shirts that they put together, super nice. The whole package has been going well. So, very excited to get, going with the game tomorrow. The Fergus Falls is going to be our opponent, and, you know, we've been playing very hard, and we hope that the boys are focused and ready to go tomorrow, and will do well for us. So, so, Highlander pride, keep it going. Moving on to wrestling, also a team that has some, some state accolades this year. Achievements, three boys qualified for state competition. They were also the three that were named to our all-conference team, Edwin Pesantes, Dylan Lentz, and Manny Alvarez. And Mr. McCoy was also honorable mention. These are our three state wrestlers. Edwin, nicest young man you'll run into. When you see him in the hallway, you'd never know he's even in wrestling. But, this was his first year in wrestling. And for someone to, let alone be all-conference, but to go all the way to represent us in state is just amazing. A lot of comments wondering where we came up with this Edwin kid, because some people thought we recruited him. We're like, no, he's been in our system. He's our kid. So, Dylan Lentz, at the 160 area, just tremendous young man. Wrestling is in his blood. He did get his 100th career win during the season, so that was just an amazing feat for him. And then, our 285 heavyweight, Manny Alvarez, he did go on. He wrestled so nice at state. He ended up placing fourth in his division. So, very fun season this year for our wrestling team. Moving into some of the other areas, the AAA Award, which is our academics, arts, and athletics, kind of the person that encompasses those areas. It has to be a senior male and a senior female. And this year, for the female rest class, AWOL was named. And then, for the males, it was Marcus Fira. Two absolutely great, amazing students for us. If you see the things that they can do in the fine arts area, and their academics are absolutely terrific. Athena Award, this goes to, it's basically for an athletic award for straight accomplishments in athletics. Pasha Scott, she was a leader for us in basketball and volleyball. And she's just been a tremendous athlete for us. And as you've seen in her basketball stats, too, she's just an all-around strong athlete for us. We had another absolutely terrific thing. If state stuff isn't good enough, we had one of our students sign on signing day. This signing day is for boys' soccer and for football. And we were lucky enough to have our own Mr. Bobby Hosh. He was asked to play for Division II school, Southwest Minnesota State University. So, that was another fun day for us. We had the families in. We had the football team come in, and we had a little ceremony for them. Terrific day. We have nothing but kudos for Bobby, and we wish him well when he moves on to Minnesota State. Other winter activities, kind of programming that is going on, or some of it is wrapped up here. CA Robotics did a tremendous job this year. Other three teams, one of their teams qualified for state competition as well. High School Robotics, that one is actually just getting going now. So, those are getting underway. They're putting their stuff together. Math team and Knowledgeable, those actually have wrapped up for us. Future problem solvers are going right now, and they're doing some competitions right now. And one I missed on here was Unified Sports for Columbia Academy. They actually have their basketball competition Friday. So, that'd be a great opportunity for our CA athletes to go and play in the Unified Tournament. So, we're excited for them, and that is tomorrow. Or, no, sorry, Friday. State is tomorrow. So, get them on my mind here. Spring musical, Little Shop of Horrors is going to be the Spring Musical this year. We do have a new director for the musical, it's Farrah Buffington. And the performances will be the last two weekends in April. The kids are working real hard right now, getting ready for the performances. And from the things that I've been seeing so far, there's a lot of great things, I think, and we have a lot of excitement for this, and we're hoping everything will be in place for that. It's going to come real fast. So, spring sports, we are actually, it's, it's, we're hitting it right now. Most of our spring teams are already practicing. Boys tennis, softball, baseball, track field, lacrosse, and synchronized swimming are our spring sports. And just getting everybody's teams put together and doing our registrations right now, having the people buying tickets. We're having a real fun time in the activities office, discerning those, those two different areas. But, we're really excited for our spring sports to get those going, and of course, the weather that it's going to bring with it. Elementary schools, we still have Destination Imagination going on with those, and they still obviously provide actual, just a tremendous service with our patrol guards out in front of our schools each and every day. All right. Questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Troy. Next up will be the ECSU Class Size Survey.
Mr. Chair and members, while Dr. McLuhan and Director Holmgren are setting up, this is an annual survey that goes on. And ordinarily, Director Hollaby is here explaining the whole of it, so we'll miss her tonight. But, it's a, it's a good compilation. We do it through EXU, and they do it for us every year, and it gives us a very good comparison on what other districts are doing. Sometimes you can't compare apples to oranges because there might be some folks that have K-8 schools, and we have a middle school. But, it's particularly enlightening when you're looking at the elementary division. And then, it's, it's, it's enlightening in some areas at the secondary, but because there's variances in high school and middle schools, it's, sometimes it's a little bit harder to synthesize the results. So, having said that, I pass the time over to the two of you.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly. Thank you so much for allowing us to present tonight. Again, we always want to start with our mission statement of creating worlds of opportunity for every learner. And we really believe that through, going through this study, we're able to look at our programming through a critical lens, which allows us to offer those opportunities to all of our students. We really are focusing on excellence and collaboration through the Metro EXU collaboration and then surrounding school districts as we're evaluating our programs. So, as Superintendent Kelly mentioned, this class size study, this year included 35 school districts in the Twin Cities metro area, and it includes region-wide trends from the last five years as well. So, going back to the 2012, 2013 school year. All of the data that is reported for the 2016-17 school year is based on data that was reported on October 1st of 2016. So, it's a snapshot from the student counts on October 1st. And the study is separated into the categories of elementary, junior secondary, and senior secondary for, you'll see that in the graphs. As far as the method for the study, it's all an electronic process. So, Metro EXU reaches out to all of the Twin Cities area superintendents, and then a designee compiles all of the data from that October 1st count and submits that. And then, we receive the report back as, after they have processed it. Again, as I mentioned, it's from that October 1st count. Consistent grade groupings kind of vary in terms of looking at the study limitations. Some operate on a junior high model instead of a middle school, and so, fifth, sixth grade, and sometimes ninth end up in those different categories. And then, you'll see later that there are a few combo ungraded, which, for example, at Highland, our Excel program is a 3.5, so that would include several grade levels. And then, at the junior secondary and senior secondary, just because there's so much variation regarding programming, they really just report on the content areas and the elective areas that are most commonly reported on by all of the schools. And then, just to note that some of the data in the actual report excludes students in special education, so self-contained or center-based programs. But, all that we're reporting, that we're showing here tonight includes all of our students. So, the first graph that you'll see here includes region-wide trends in the elementary schools. So, you'll see that this first, it goes by grade level. The first line is the 2012-13 school year, up through the darkest blue line, which is the current school year. A couple of things to note that were put out in this, in the study are that this year kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and then the combination or ungraded reported a five-year low in their class size, class sizes, and that's across the region. And you'll also see that class size consistently increases by grade level in the elementary division. So, then, this is just a summary of that piece. In the junior secondary, you can see the trends here. For the fourth consecutive year, there was a decrease in interdisciplinary classes. Across the board, that's not reflected here because that's not a category that we've reported on. And then, you'll just see some of the five-year highs are in art, family and consumer sciences, physical education, tech ed. And then, in the core subjects, we're seeing a consistently lower class size in English Language Arts and math, being lower than science and social studies. The next one is, it gets bigger with all of the elective areas at the second, at the senior secondary level, which we're excited to offer all of those opportunities to our students. And you'll just see here, again, that, you know, we've seen some five-year reported highs in the areas of art, language arts, or English Language Arts, math, music, you can see that, physical education, science, social studies, tech ed, and work experience programs, which we're really excited about growing in our district as well. And a low in the World Languages Department.
Next, we're going to really talk about how does Columbia Heights compare to both the region and to some of our local school districts right around us. And these guidelines here we have listed, these are actual numbers that we found in policy of other school districts close by us. So, you can see that when you look at these numbers, we really focus on trying to keep our class sizes lower than some of the other surrounding districts. You know, just for an example, when you, when you get to the first, second, you know, grade, we're at 20 at first grade, you know, our low end, where, you know, Fridley and Centennial and NOKA are, you know, a little bit higher. Especially as you get up into the fourth and fifth grade, you see that those class sizes in the other districts are pushing up there, way up into the 30s. And that's kind of our high end. Go ahead. So, really, our guideline here, we really look at the pre-K at about 20 students in the, in the classroom. We look at kindergarten, somewhere between 20 and 22, both the first and second grade at 20 to 24, and then the intermediate grades at 25 to 30. Where, when we get done, you know, staffing for, we really look at the class sizes, and overall, in elementary, we want to be 24 to 1. I think we've said that for, for, you know, many years. Next, these are the actual class sizes that we have right now in our elementary schools. And what we did here is if you look at the, the red, the red highlighted areas, these are areas where actually below where our guideline is at. So, you can see that we have several areas where, where, where overstapped in, in these schools, especially when you look at North Park and Valley View, then we have quite a few very low class sizes right now as we're going through this year. When you look at the average class size, though, by division to, to the region, you can see the, the blue line, of course, is Columbia Heights. You can see again, in the elementary side, that we are low across everybody else when we look at the average. Look at the junior secondary or the middle school or Columbia Academy, we're right a little bit higher in both cases. But, when you look at the numbers, there's not very much difference. We're looking at about a one, one and a half students. Here, the very first line in each of these categories, the, the blue, light blue line is Columbia Heights. And here, we put the other school districts against it, so you can get an idea of where the other schools that are in this consortium, and with the EXU, is where they're at. Again, we're relatively low when you look at the other school districts that are included in the study. Back to the elementary division, we split us out now by grade level against the region. And you can see that in every situation except the third grade, we are actually lower in every single category. And actually, when you look at the third grade, it's only .2 of one student. So, it's really even. But, we're, we're quite below the average when we look at the region in our elementary schools. Again, we're putting now the elementary against the other school districts. Again, we're, we're the first line in each of these categories, you know, kindergarten up through, well, all the way through the combo class. The combo class, really, the, the comparison there is, Roseville's the only other school district in this grouping that actually has a combo class. But, we are lower in all of these categories again. Now, we switch over to Columbia Academy. Here, we're by the study area. And you can see that when you look at our core classes, we really aren't very high there. We are up a little bit when you look at some of our elective classes, but our cores are, look very good at the middle school level. And we get to the middle school, again, this is somewhat the same case. What did I say?
High school?
I meant high school.
Senior, senior.
Sorry. Anyway, it's kind of the same case. I mean, when you look at our electives, we have some higher class sizes. But, when you look at our core subject area, we're really down there around that average. So, I think we're doing pretty well with the class sizes in our secondary area. And I think at this point, we are just open for questions.
So, I was wondering about the, looking at the slide with the junior secondary average class size by class. And I'm looking at the four core areas, English, math, science, and social studies. Why is it that there's less enrollment in English and math than there is in science and social studies?
I think some of that is because we have more, and I'm going to call on the I think some of that is because we have more, and I'm going to call on the Director of Teaching and Learning if she has any comments as well, because we have more splits where we have kids in intervention classes or taking things twice. So when you, when you look at that, there's more of an emphasis on the literacy and the numeracy. Would that be about right?
More sections offered with reduced ratio.
Oh, more sections, so, okay.
Yeah, so this is the actual class size average, not the enrollment.
And so then for English, that it also includes remedial and intervention classes, right? And same thing with the math?
Yes.
Okay. So that would make sense to really reduce, that would reduce the average.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks. Thanks for the clarification.
Okay, if there's no more questions, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Next up is the health insurance bids. Bill gets to stay there.
We were still getting information on this, so that's why you're not seeing a PowerPoint in your, in your packet tonight, because I was actually getting information today. So, I apologize that it's not right there in front of you. Again, we are here to create opportunities for every learner in Columbia Heights, and when we talk about our core values tonight, we're looking at really collaboration with our, with our staff, when we look at the benefits to put forward for our staff. The way the, the way the new program works with going out for bid for, okay. We, we receive sealed bids from different providers for our health insurance benefit, and after we open these, actually, every provider has a chance to come back and actually give us a best and final response. So that's why we're, you know, getting information in a little later. So, that finished up today. So, what we had here, we received responses from Blue Cross Blue Shield itself, all by itself, and then with, through South Central Service Cooperative, which, who we've been with them for many, many years, Health Partners, the National Joint Alliance, and PEAP and Preferred One. Medica did not comply with the specifications, mainly that bid came in like five days late, and so that has not been considered. Preferred One, Health Partners, and Blue Cross really had the, also had a self-funded response, and then Blue Cross Blue Shield, the South Central Service Cooperative, and Health Partners were really the most competitive fully insured responses with the current plan designs that we have now. Preferred One is the most competitive self-funded response, and then all of the responses entail an immediate rate increase to the current district offering. So nobody that came forward gave us a lower rate than we have now. South Central Service Corp., as I said, we've been working with this group for a very, very long time. There's quite a few school districts involved in this pool. They will keep our exact current plans where they are now, there's no changes. We're looking at a first year increase of 4.5%. They don't have a cap on the second year, and over the last few years, we've been averaging about 4%, but actually, over the last, the last three years, we've only averaged about 1%. So we're very happy with how the service cooperative has been working with us. And then there is, the response also includes a narrow network model that includes Fairview and Park Nickel systems with a 7% additional savings if our employees decide to use that, those services. Again, with the South Central Service Cooperative participation, we require a joint powers agreement. We continue with that, that's required by state law. But we also, it allows us to access their other programs, like wellness offerings, technology rentals, and some purchasing support and so forth. Actually, their wellness works very, very well for us. Blue Cross Blue Shield National Network of Physicians at Hospitals is the largest in the country. 98% of the network matches utilized clinics. Their response also includes NEAP service, had no charge to us, a 24-hour nurse line wellness coaching online for our employees, health assessment, fitness discounts of participating on gyms, updated member and employer website, and preferred pricing with select account, which helps a lot. The direct quote that came from Blue Cross Blue Shield also matches our plans. We have a first increase, a first year increase of 2.5%, then with a cap on the second year at 8%, and again, the same narrow network with Blue Cross. With Blue Cross, the direct quote requires the district to disassociate from the cooperative. The wellness program and the employee assistance program would no longer be available as we have through the South Central Service Cooperative, and then we'll be underwritten directly by Blue Cross instead of through the co-op. And what the co-op really gives us is when we have a high year, a lot of utilization, we're rated more on a pool, so as all the school districts are there. If we have a high year, we're going to get a lower rate increase than we should have, and vice versa. If we have a really good year, we're going to be helping other districts up a little bit, which has really kept us in pretty good shape. But if we went directly with Blue Cross, then it's only, we're only rated on ourselves. There's no other, nobody to lean on. Health Partner, they did match our current plans offered by the district. A very low first year at, you know, about a quarter of a percent, but then they have a great year, a second year guaranteed rate of 9%. And usually, they say it's a guaranteed rate, but usually what happens is that is going to be the rate in the second year, and they're trying to buy our service here. Some plan deviations, if we looked at the Health Partnership, pharmacy, over-the-counter medications, Health Partners, formulary prescription drugs, they do not include over-the-counter medications. We have quite a few medications that are over-the-counter right now that we can still use our insurance with, with Blue Cross, which we, where we couldn't with Health Partners. The pharmacy, the diabetic blood glucose testing would be a little different, where Blue Cross is through the pharmacy, and with Health Partners, you have to jump through a few more hoops and get it through the medical equipment benefit. And then anything with Health Partners that is out of network, I mean, here we're, is, it's 80/20, so there'd be 20% cost to any of our employees going out of, out of network. And their network isn't quite as big as Blue Cross. What's nice, especially with our retirees with Blue Cross, is they can go anywhere in the nation and get service, where it's not true with, with any, with all of the other groupings. Ambulance, also with Health Partners, is on a co-insurance, so if someone had to use an ambulance, it'd be a 20% cost to them by using that ambulance. So, the South Service Cooperative, that plan increase is at 4.5%, keeping the plans the same, with a no guarantee on the second year. The direct Blue Cross Shield is at 2.5 with a cap at 8% in the second year, and then Health Partners at a quarter percent. Same plan design with a new guarantee of 9% in the second year. Just a simple breakdown, again, the South Service Cooperative offers the least impact to our current benefits for our employees. Blue Cross Shield proposal only impacts the pharmacy coverage for a few members, other than this, you know, slight pharmacy change. The Blue Cross matches our network and benefits. Health Partners has a, has provided a proposal that also would change some of the medications, especially the formulary medications, where some of our employees would have to change the medications that they take. South Service Cooperative offers the most robust wellness plan offered, including their proposal. They also offer the EAP services without any cost, where Health Partners, we would not have any of that. South Central Service Cooperative has been willing to partner in the last few years for multi-yearly offers, and has been very flexible with us if we want to tweak that one way or the other. Been very helpful. If the district were to receive an average increase from the Central Service Cooperative for that, for that second year, we'd be at 8.5% over that two-year period. When we look at the Health Partners, we'd be at about 9%, and then for the direct Blue Cross Shield, we're looking at about 12%. We are taking this back to our insurance committee on Thursday afternoon, and they will now bring back a recommendation back to the board, and I'm sure they've all been, you know, for the information that we've looked at so far, they're really leaning to stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield. So I expect that's what you're going to see here in a couple of weeks when we bring it back to you. So, any questions on any of that?
So, I just had one question. I understand that Medica sent it, sent it in too late. Did you get a chance to kind of look at it?
Oh, actually, we did look at it. Medica, they did not match our plan designs whatsoever. So the plans are totally different. I mean, they disqualified by themselves by not coming in on time, but the, the other, the group really wasn't interested in totally changing everything, the way that its service is provided to them.
Thank you.
And the other piece too, as I mentioned way up on top, you know, there was some self-funded plans at this point because of the risk. We really haven't gone down that road whatsoever. The new, the new Hittler Law, we have to receive a bid also from PEAP. Even though the rates were very comparable, the PEAP insurance, the way they service that or deliver it is very different. There's a four-tier plan, where if you stay in the first tier, the prices are pretty close, but if they, if you wanted to go to Rochester, you're paying out of pocket some, you know, four times what you would otherwise. So, that's something else they really haven't been very interested in going down. So, because the South Central Service Cooperative has the lowest rate at this point, and it's what we have been using, and we've had very good luck with them, I'm sure that's the recommendation that they'll be forwarding on Thursday.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Next up is equity training.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, there was a school board request for information regarding specific equity training, so this evening I'll be providing an informational update on that. Our mission is to create worlds of opportunity for every learner, and this presentation will focus on the core values of excellence, integrity, respect. So again, this is an informational update on possible equity training for the school board, as requested. So, the consultant who would provide the equity training, her name is Phyllis Braxton. She is affiliated with District 916, of which we're a member. She's also the president and co-founder of Pink Consulting. She's got many, many years of experience facilitating groups through intercultural skill building and diversity awareness processes. She has also provided training here in district, both at our district equity meeting teams, the high school, and she's scheduled to do some other work this spring. So we do have some, we do have experience with, with this facilitator. Some of the possible training topics that Ms. Braxton offers is the developmental model of intercultural sensitivity and inventory, and I'll go into that a little bit, I'll give you an overview of what that means, intercultural conflict styles, team building, and then she could, if so requested, offer a tailored session. So the first option, looking at the developmental model of intercultural sensitivity, this is an approach to equity, which is based on two major understandings or principles. One, that there are different stages along the continuum. So if you look at the bottom there, really, it, the equity work isn't, it's on a continuum, so it's not like, it's not like those of us in, in the education world, or in any field for that matter, are either there or we're not there. We all have multiple experiences with difference, different cultures, people who are different from us in, in a variety of ways, right, on all of the different spectra. So that is the approach of this developmental model, which was created by Dr. Milton Bennett. Also, that, and it's based on the principle that cultural competence is a skill that we need to develop. So it's just like any other skill, work at it, practice, learn, rehearse, continue to Along with the developmental model of intercultural sensitivity, Mitch Hammer developed what we call the IDI, or the Intercultural Development Inventory, and it comes along with the plan. What this is, is a tool that is currently used all around the world by many universities, major corporations, the FBI actually uses it, and many faith-based organizations, and then local districts here in the metro area as well. What this is, is a 50-question individual survey. It's personal, confidential, and private. The results, however, are delivered by a qualified administrator, one-to-one individually. So, I'm a qualified administrator for the IDI and have been since 2008, and we also have four other qualified administrators in the district. So this is a tool that we've used in the district since 2008 in different capacities and with different groups of people. So what does it do? It identifies where individuals are, where they land on that continuum that I showed you, and kind of what does it mean to be at each stage of the continuum, what comes next? And as I mentioned before, it's, it's about skill development, and so what can I do if I so choose to move along that continuum? What are the activities or practices that I need to do? So, each participant receives, like I said, confidential, individualized report, and then a plan, which is a guideline, guidance for moving, moving along. What the facilitator would do is not only provide information on the model, that continuum model, but also provide feedback, and then any follow-up sessions that could be done as a whole group around the continuum. Along with that, then there's another tool called the Intercultural Conflict Style Inventory. What this is, is instead of a line continuum, there are four different quadrants that identify for cross-cultural conflict resolution styles. This again is an individual survey, and what it does is identify one's own personal conflict style. And then through this process, the participants learn about the strengths and weaknesses of the different intercultural conflict styles, and how their own communication and conflict resolution approach compares to preferred styles, their own preferred style, and those of folks with another conflict style. So as, again, results are plotted on one of the four quadrants. And so what this model does is provides a roadmap to how to be, how we use specifically, specific strategies for communicating that are grounded in our own cultures, and learning about strategies from other cultures as well, in communicating ideas, resolving disagreements, and dealing with emotional upsets. Another option offered by Ms. Braxton is team building, so building better working relationships in order to advance an organization's overall goals, also interactive activities that increase the group's level of trust, self-awareness, and cross-cultural communication, which results in greater productivity. The cost, we would, as a District 916 member, we would, we would have a reduced rate, so it could be, you can see the rate of $2,500 for a full-day session, or $1,500 for a half-day So with that, I can answer any questions on, on any of those tools that I, that I shared with you. And then, of course, this, tonight is an informational update. It would, however, move to a governance if the board so choose to, so chose to move this forward as an action.
And if I might comment, and then maybe Laura, you might want to as well. Although Ms. Braxton has like four options up there, I think that where this request really started percolating is because the 916 school board had an overview, I believe, of some of the things. They did not do the testing or anything, but they had an overview of her work. And so, in a moment, if Laura would like to chime in here, the idea was to put this before the board because they had done it there, and to see if it was something you wanted to engage in. When I asked Sina to put this together, I said, show the whole display of what Ms. Braxton does, but really, I think the original request was in the area of the equity kinds of training. And Laura, since you were there, I'm going to pass the baton to you to, to kick off the conversation on what you experienced.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was, it was some time ago. It seems like it's been probably about a year since we, since we actually worked with, when Phyllis came on board as Equity Director/Advisor, and specifically looking at different ways that, different ways that we can communicate, you know, is basically what it comes down, comes down to. And I thought it was very interesting to be able to identify what is a And I thought it was very interesting to be able to identify what is a, sometimes there can be differences that are not necessarily apparent, where people can misunderstand, you know? And I think everybody here at this table has had, has had some sort of training whatsoever. But when we were first looking at it, we had basically, I think, a lot of board members that had not had anything like that. So, mostly, I just want to know what everybody thinks of this. I was hoping that I, you know, I could get input. I just thought it was interesting. And if we wanted to look at team building, or, you know, doing the whole, the whole test, that'd be great, although the, what we did was not one of those options that were up there. We just basically took an online, an online survey, which was more self-reflective, and then got together as a group to kind of go over the different stages along the continuum. So, and that was as clear as mud, I'm sure, but...
And she presented to the group, though, initially?
Yes, yes. Yeah, we did it as kind of a work study, you know, kind of a, well, it wasn't called a work study. It was like, it was a board retreat, is what they called it. So, I was, I was wondering if anybody would be interested in doing something like this, or should we do something like this as far, as far as board development? Because we haven't talked about any board development.
I like these options.
Okay.
Option one was the equity. I don't see them.
Can you go back to the four of the options?
The arrows.
Is there like something that just shows what they're...
Option one?
Does it show all the options together?
They're there.
Okay. Yeah. I don't know. I like all of them. Can we do all of them?
Depends on how much money you have in your board budget.
No, it's our budget.
$1,000, yeah. Well, I will say that that top option there is going to be more of, I guess I'm not quite necessarily as comfortable with doing a test because people can think that you pass or fail, if that makes any sense.
That's why they call it an assessment, correct?
It's an inventory.
Inventory.
It's an inventory.
And it's explained to you that there's just a spectrum, and it's private.
Yeah, and that was one of the things that Phyllis was talking about, is that sometimes whenever you put it down on there, you know, it's, it's not, it may not be a good idea to give somebody an actual number along the continuum. Okay? It may not, it may be counterproductive in education or in other areas. It's kind of a little bit of a, I'm talking about team, team building here.
So, I guess, I want to chime in, just, I think this is coming from a board that we might have had months ago.
Well, yeah, and some stuff that I, when I was over, when I was in Boston, too, I took a number of things that were kind of related more around, how do we talk to each other? How do we communicate with each other?
Yeah.
Because that seemed to be kind of an issue.
Okay, I guess, I'm going to be honest, in that when this was being presented to me, I was thinking we were talking about staff in the district because it wasn't really as clear on here that we were talking about it for the board. So, that being said, I guess I'm a little bit, I don't, I don't know that we need to go with a half-day training if there's a, if there's a problem. I guess I'm not seeing it, or why we would need to do, I can see team building, but I don't know if we need to do it through an equity form. And that's just my input there. I don't know.
I want to comment on that as well. I think, I think all the things that were talked about here are very important things.
Absolutely.
You know, for me, what I looked at was the price tag initially, and I know that, I mean, that's something that we really need to be conscious of. And I think as a board development, that's a pretty steep price to pay for six or so people to have this training. I do know that there are other types of programs that are out there in terms of speakers that are able to do similar types of training. Specifically, I think of the intercultural conflict styles. I'm actually doing a training for my staff on one of those through Anoka County Mediation Services, and it's much less expensive through different other, you know, forums that have some experience. So, I'm wondering if that is something that we decide. I think we should look at several different options to provide training in those avenues that doesn't come with a $2,500 price tag.
And I don't want to take away importance at all about the equity and all of that. I just don't know that that needs to be the only focus of team building.
Oh, and John, you were going to say something, and then I'll say something after that.
Sorry, John.
No, that's good. I was just, might I make a suggestion? I, I'm not 100% sure that this is definitely the path we need to go down either, but I'm certainly encouraged that the group is interested in doing some type of team building. Where we find it from, you know, what's going to be best for us, I don't know. But I guess my suggestion, and Holla, please say whatever you wanted to say after this, but my suggestion was going to be, is there, could we have staff look into some other options and maybe bring them back to a work session where we could sit down and say, "This is a direction we'd like to go for our professional development as board members." That was just going to be my suggestion, is maybe bring some other options out there. Go ahead, Holla, sorry.
No, it's fine. So, like you, I don't know why, but I was kind of under the impression that we're going to kind of do this, and then staff is going to do it. I don't know why I thought that.
Staff is doing this.
But I thought we were going to like, we're doing this, and then staff is going to be doing it, so we're leading the way. That's the impression I was under, but I think I misunderstood it.
Let me just do some clarification. We have done this for a number of years with staff, and I'm just going to say that it's a process, and there's multiple on-and-off ramps for this. And so, we have found that sometimes individual teachers are ready for it, sometimes groups of staff are ready for it. But it is really one of those personal things, whether you are ready for it as a team, or whether you're ready for it as a building. And sometimes the administrators, mostly the administrators in this room, I believe in one way or the other, have taken this test and taken a look at themselves, but it was with a readiness factor. And we did it internally, by and large, because we have trained staff. Some people have issues with working with someone they know, and therefore, we don't force anybody to do someone, do something with someone we know. But so, that's how we avoid the price tag. It wasn't a matter of so much leading the way on this one because this is part of our equity work, but it was a matter of Laura had seen this at 916 and wanted to know if in point of fact, we wanted to do that. Something else that comes to mind is that you agreed to do some board governance in the fall, and set your agenda on what you want to do in your areas of accountability, and it might be better served rather than staff randomly coming up with options and saying, "Here's some other things you could do that might pull you off." Task is to see what your development work is going to be for the 17, 18 school year, and then from that, decide what kind of professional development you might like. And it might be this, or it might be something entirely different, because this is, this is really for yourselves as a group, and it should have some value and worth for you both individually and as a group. And to me, just putting in my two cents worth, you might want to just develop your governance plan for next year, and then say, "Now, what kind of PD do we want stemming from that, and at what price?"
Yes.
You know, we've talked to you about potentially doing, you know, some sort of, like, half-day or something in the fall. And I also know people who would probably pro bono some, some team building, not necessarily relating to equity. That's kind of what I do, so I can probably find some people to, so.
When this whole idea came up, we're talking about governance, you know, and planning a governance thing or anything like that, so. Thank you for bringing this forward, and it gives us more to talk about, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks for the information.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, I think next up is the explanation of the ULA process.
While Director Bennett and Director Holmgren come to the forefront, some of you are familiar with the ULA process and unrequested leave of absence. Some of you might have even experienced it, or know somebody in your family that has. But we just thought, because it's a new board, and it's that time of year where we're in staffing, that we just do a brief explanation of what it is.
Chair Larkin, members of the board, Superintendent Kelly, Director Holmgren and I are here just to discuss the unrequested leave of absence process. So, really with staffing, it's two separate processes. The first one is the unrequested leave of absence, so staff that are covered under Minnesota State Statute 122A40, which is pretty much teachers, administrators, principals, if they're required to hold a license by the state of Minnesota. They have a chance, if we do not have a position for them for the following school year, we place them on an unrequested leave of absence, and then they have up to five years if something does open up in their field, which they're qualified for, to have rights back to that position. We've been doing staffing now for about three months, and we're just trying to finalize, this is the last resort. I mean, we never want to place anybody on an unrequested leave of absence, but there are cases where we just do not have a position for the person properly licensed for it. So, you will see, so, in a future board meeting, the governance question will be to, it's proposed placement, unrequested leave of absence is the first step. They're given 14 days to request a hearing. If they don't request a hearing, then we do put them on a final placement, or if they have a hearing, depending on that outcome, then we would do a final placement. And part of the statute does state that a teacher's contract, or staff covered by 122A40, can only be terminated by a majority roll, called vote of the full membership of the board. So, if we do have anybody on an unrequested leave of absence, those will be brought forward at a future board meeting. So, just more to talk, the process. And then staff that are not part of this, that will be non-renewed, that are not tenured, or other non-affiliated staff will be after that.
So, applying the unrequested leave of absence, that is the termination? Or the termination is after the five years that they haven't been able to find something, and then they're terminated?
It's two-pronged. So, the first one is we have to propose them on placement, and then they have a chance for a hearing. If we don't have a hearing, then it's, it's not termination, they're just placed on an unrequested leave of absence for five years. But they have to submit a letter every year by February 1st, saying that they wish to come back. And if they don't, then they lose their rights back to a position. And then after the five years, then they would be terminated.
Okay, so that's when the board gets involved?
You'll get involved because you'll put them on proposed placement, and then final placement.
Okay.
It's not very often that we have to do this, but sometimes we do because of licensure area, or positions, so, or declining enrollment, or whatever it is. So, we wanted to make sure that we at least presented it to you as a board as a whole before we get into the thick of things, so that you know that it's one of the things that occur in school districts in the spring.
And for clarification, this is only tenured staff?
Tenured staff that qualify under that 122A40.
Anyone who is not tenured wouldn't be put onto this type of, wouldn't be on requested leave.
Correct, so if you're a non-tenured teacher, you just get non-renewed. This is for staff that have reached tenure that are under that definition of 122A40, that would have rights back to a position. And we have nowhere else to put them, we have to look across the organization.
And sometimes they're recalled back even before the beginning of the next year. And I'd just like to say that when I started out as a very young teacher in Whiteboro Lake, that I was put on first, I was put on unrequested leave probably for about the first eight years of my career, because even though we had tenure, it was not a good time in education, and so therefore, we'd sit around the table down in the faculty lounge and say, "Who's going to be here, or who is not?" Luckily, every year, most of us were called back, but we never knew what the finances were going to be at that time, so it just became a thing. And we used to have slogans about it, and you, you try to make light of it, but it does impact people because it is their livelihood. So, we try to be sensitive about it and let them know first. And so, we don't publicize the names that well in advance, so that they can be told, and they can adjust, and then we bring them to the board. So, they'll know before they get to the board that they're going to be put on proposed and requested leave.
So, after getting on this unrequested leave of absence, if there is an opening, and there's multiple people who qualify for it, is it by seniority, or do they interview, and then whoever the interview team deems to be the most qualified would get it?
It'd be based on seniority and licensure. So, say, if we had two people, say it was a science, unrequested leave of absence, we had two science teachers who are similarly licensed, it'd be based on their seniority date.
Okay, and just to be clear for the public, I'm not implying that following seniority affects anybody's qualifications. I fully support that.
One other comment that I want to make is that usually when there is, there is, you're projecting the need to place staff on an unrequested leave, that you do it earlier rather than later to give people the most options for planning, whether or not they want to, you know, if they, if they want to find other means of employment in the fall. Although, most of the time, it seems like we call pretty much everybody back.
And that is correct, but with unrequested leave of absence, there are statutes with guidelines of dates we have to follow. So, by the time you place them on proposed, unrequested leave of absence, given enough time for a hearing, it all has to be done by July 1st. So, that's why this gets started earlier, and especially if you have to have a hearing that could affect other staffing in the spring.
Okay. Thank you for the information.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Waiting on you, John.
Hey, John.
I think he's not hearing us.
Uh-oh. We don't have sound for John.
Okay, we can't hear.
We have a cell phone number, and Mike's doing the work behind.
Oh, he's calling.
He's the magic behind the TV now.
Or the vice chair could take over.
I have an item for board topics now.
Okay, are we back? Are we back? Are we back? Are you guys there?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, thanks for the moment, we got it. Okay. Did you say you had a board topic, Laura?
Yes, I was going to wonder if we could make a, put into a policy how long we're going to wait to resolve technical difficulties before we continue on the board meeting. We need to have a policy about that.
Yep.
Okay. I just thought that was a good idea. I keep forgetting to mention it before we do this, so.
And we've actually had conversations about that previously, and we have kind of a guideline of 10 minutes trying to reconnect, but putting something on paper is probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Any other board topics?
No.
Okay. Well, before I lose my audio again, we will adjourn the meeting at 8:28.